Madam Clerk, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you. First item is approval of consent calendar. Council Journals, October 16th, 2018, November 20th, 2018.
Can I have a motion?
Move approval.
We have a motion, excuse me, approval for the consent calendar. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodriks.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Licenses not requiring public hearing for vote. Application for holiday sales license, Jose Lopez. Doing business as El Mariachi, 736 North Broadway, 02914. Also an application for the vicuylating license, Class 1.
Is the applicant here? Please step up to the podium. Mr. City Solicitor, would you like to swear the applicant in, please?
Please, 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 state your name for the record.
My name is Jose Lopez.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
You make sure his mic's on?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, does he have all his information on file here at the clerk's office?
Yes, everything's been filed properly. We've done the advertising. They followed everything to a T. There's no issues on any kind of licensing. We haven't received anything back on outstanding accounts or debts.
Any council members have any questions for the applicant at this time? No questions?
Actually, I think it would be a good practice if we can at least ask what are they serving and stuff, kind of like a little PR for them, for the new businesses.
Please, would you like to talk about?
It's going to be a Mexican restaurant. We have the, there are four other similar restaurants currently in operation, and we have the menus which I would be happy to distribute to the members if they would like to.
Sure.
I'll take one.
Do you have any appetizers that you'll be serving with that as well?
For the record, my name is Samuel Miller. I'm the attorney for the applicant. Just sort of be a good plug for the businesses so the public can know that, you know, what you're serving and what you're doing, so pre-advertising, I guess, right?
With that being said, Madam Clerk, we have a roll call vote. Need a motion?
I was talking to a clerk this afternoon. It was advertised.
It was advertised, but it's not on our agenda, so I can't vote on it. It's not on our agenda. We can advertise.
Okay, do we have any agenda?
We have agenda. We have special meaning. We have agenda. Not a good problem. We have to talk. I looked at the, if we add it, we can't vote on it. So you don't want to advertise like?
They didn't?
Yeah.
They didn't put the liquor license on the agenda, so they can't vote on it today. They didn't put the liquor license on the agenda, so we can't vote on it tonight.
Only those licenses are on anything. But we can add it. We have special meaning if we need to. We'll all vote for it now.
Okay. So the vote this evening is going to be both on the application for the holiday sales license and for the liquor. So are we going to do two separate votes, or you want to combine them?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay. So right now, this is not for public hearing, license, excuse me, for the holiday sales license.
That's correct.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Cahoon to approve his license, seconded by Councilman Murato. Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodriks.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
The next for vote is the application for vicuylating license. That's also Jose Lopez, doing business as El Mariachi, 736 Broadway, 02914.
Is all his paperwork in order and submitted into the clerk's office?
Everything has. Advertising has been, has been abided to. Everything is good.
Okay. Any, the pleasure of the council, you have any questions at this point in time?
Negative.
Okay, with that being said...
Mr. President?
Public hearing, Mr. President.
Public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on behalf or against this hearing for a license? Anyone here wishing to speak on behalf for or against the liquor license? With that being said...
Vicuylating. Vicuylating, you said liquor.
For the vicuylating. It's just for the vicuylating.
Okay.
It will be during a special hearing on another day.
Okay. So I apologize, this is for vicuylating licenses, this is. Anyone have any comments, concerns, or questions at this point in time for public hearing? Public hearing is now closed, at the pleasure of the council. Are we...
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Cahoon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Murato. Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodriks.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. That concludes this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're all set, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So before we move on to communications at this point in time, real quick, I just want to, I have a couple of riddles up there. Keep them to yourself. I like to try to figure that out while you're sitting here, trying to figure out what's going on up here. You can pay attention to what's up there as well. Two riddles. You got the top one, 50 Cs and an HD, or 57 HV. In every meeting, I'll be doing a riddle for someone to solve. Now, this should be pretty easy, but they're going to get more difficult as we move on. Next item, please.
I thought they were error codes. Next item is on communications. Mayor Communications, His Honor, Mayor Bob De Silva.
Is the mayor here this evening? Anyone here on behalf of the mayor's office? None. Next item. Next one, please.
The Loughs on Taunton, Berman Architect, and Joseph A. La Magna Esquire for a vote. Are they here tonight? Are you here tonight?
Yes. Please step right up to the podium.
These are them.
Okay. Let me pass these on.
Yeah. Jeff, we have to pass all those ones. No, they're all different.
To Joe.
Ready? I am ready. Good to see you again.
Please.
Jose Mendez.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
You may proceed.
This is a petition for permission to install balconies on the property 13152 Taunton Avenue, which Mr. Mendez has recently purchased. He has had zoning board approval and planning board approval of his redevelopment plan and a copy of the proposed balconies which will protrude over Taunton Avenue, was submitted with the application by the architect. We need permission from this board because the state has designated the city to have jurisdiction over the Taunton Avenue right-of-way. Normally, it would be a state right-of-way, but the city has been delegated the permission by the state, and since it is a state right-of-way, we need permission for any protrusion over that right-of-way. These balconies will be no more than 30 inches from the building, and they'll be about 12 feet high, and it's an integral part of the redevelopment of the building.
So is the balcony for aesthetics? When you say 30 inches protrude...
Well, they'll be functional in the sense that they'll have a French door leading from the apartment out, but they're barely big enough to put a couple of chairs out there if someone wanted to sit out there.
Okay. Well, you said 30 inches.
30 inches protruding from the building, less than three feet.
Yeah, okay. Does council members have any questions, concerns? Anybody here this evening just to look forward?
Mr. President, is this a, is this a public hearing, or is this just a vote on the communications?
It's...
Mr. Solicitor, I don't know. Is this, it's under communications, but is it a, was it advertised as a vote?
It wasn't. The governor indicated it as a vote.
Janet indicated it as a vote.
So...
I got a question. Please. So maybe to the solicitor or madam clerk, has the zoning, anyone from zoning taken a look at this?
Yes, so the zoning board previously approved the application. Not particularly the, they couldn't give a variance on the protrusion because that's beyond the scope of the zoning board. They did give other variances, I believe, was parking in another, was parking in...
Parking and landscaping. There are a number of variances that were granted because it's a downtown overlay district.
Correct. So that was done, and so this is, as Taunton Avenue is a city street, as Mr. Lamagna indicated, normally when you protrude over a city, excuse me, a state street, you need the approval of the state.
Yeah.
But for whatever reason, Taunton Avenue has been delegated to the city, so we're the quote-unquote licensing authority, the approving authority, so any time there's going to be a protrusion into that street plane, we would have to approve it, and that's what's here before you tonight.
Well, that's not actually over the street. It's actually over the sidewalk.
Sidewalk, but the state owns...
Statistically, the state owns from the face of the building to the face of the building across the street.
I think it's a great design. It looks, it looks good in the rendering, so, and the zoning has no issues with it. Is any other departments that had to be...
So as part of the zoning application, there was input from, you know, there was obviously input from all the other planning department boards and whatnot, and no one was opposed to the variances that were there, and, you know, they had no authority over the protrusion of this balcony issue, but they were all very complimentary of it, but it wasn't in their purview to grant it or deny it for the council to do so.
I think aesthetically, I'm sorry, go ahead, councilman.
No, I was just going to say, it's very attractive looking. It is a very old, tired building. It's been in Taunton Avenue for years, and we're all talking about revitalizing Taunton Avenue and being business-friendly. It sounds like all the departments that have been involved are in favor all the way through the zoning board, and that area of Taunton Avenue really needs a jolt in the arm, and this is not going to infringe upon anybody else, so I would make a motion for approval.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Rodriks for approval. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Murato. Madam Clerk, maybe we have a roll call vote on this?
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodriks.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
University Orthopedics 5K Race, Jonathan White, Gray Matter Marketing, for a vote.
Good evening. I'm Rita Capitasto. I'm the Vice President of Family Development at East Bay Community Action Program for a vote.
Good evening. I'm Rita Capitasto. I'm the Vice President of Family Development at East Bay Community Action Program. I oversee all social services at EPCAP, which serves about more than 30,000 people every year throughout the East Bay. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you for a few minutes about the possibility of developing a health equity zone in East Providence. Health equity zones are funded by the Rhode Island Department of Health to encourage community members to collaborate on a plan of action to promote the wellness of the community. In my own words, to summarize, health equity zones help people to live healthy, meaningful, and socially connected lives. It's now recognized that about 80% of our health outcomes are determined by social factors, such as where we live, how socially connected we are, our financial status, and if we perceive our lives to be meaningful. What happens in the doctor's office is only one aspect of health and wellness. Other factors are often referred to now as the social determinants of health. Health equity zone initiatives are intended to address some of those factors in a very individualized way in each community based on the unique needs of those communities. Health equity zones are, again, funded by the Rhode Island Department of Health, and they were implemented five years ago in 11 communities. There are still nine in operation, three in Providence, and six other communities. The one that I'm most familiar with is in Bristol, Health Equity Zone. They do very fine work, and we're also very involved with those projects. Examples of some of those projects in Bristol include the development of a recovery center for individuals that are recovering from substance use disorders. We provide a comprehensive array of services there. We also have placed a student navigator or an advocate-type person at Mount Hope High School, and she works with students who are struggling academically, who are at risk of not graduating. We connect them and their family members with various social service supports, summer youth employment, year-round employment, and a array of other services. Throughout the state, examples of other health equity zone initiatives include diabetes prevention, suicide prevention, refurbishing walking paths, various arts initiatives, and many creative programming. Based on the success of the health equity zones throughout the state, the Department of Health has made additional money available to develop up to four or five new health equity zones, and we'd like to do that in collaboration with the city and other community partners in East Providence. Funding that's available is up to $150,000 per year. The first year, the proposal that we're submitting now will be for the first year. The plan for that year is to conduct a comprehensive community needs assessment in collaboration with all stakeholders in the community. If that's approved, there is up to an additional four years of funding, again, up to $150,000 per year, to implement the specific projects that were identified during the community needs assessment. My agency, EPCAP, submitted a letter of intent to develop a health equity zone, and based on the merit of that letter and our agency history, was invited by the department to submit a full proposal, which we will at the beginning of next week. I'm here tonight to ask for your support in the form of a letter or some other statement of commitment to collaborate with my agency and with the other community partners to conduct a community needs assessment that will then in turn help determine if we receive the funding, what projects would be funded. We've received a letter already from the mayor, numerous community partners, arts organizations, human service providers. It'd be wonderful to have your support in this. There's no funding that we're requesting. We're just requesting support in the initiative.
Well, thank you, and I don't see any issue with that, but at the pleasure of the council, I know the clerk, you'd like to speak on behalf of this as well?
It was actually brought to me by Councilman Murato. He was, it was something of interest that they did that I believe in, like you were saying before in Bristol, and it seemed like it was successful. I yield to Councilman Murato.
Yeah, so I know the work that your organization does in Bristol. I'm very familiar with it. In fact, I'm the one that approves most of the petitions for some of the programs that you do in Bristol throughout the April and summer, spring and summer months, right?
Yes, yes.
So that's why I support it for East Providence. I think it's a good thing, and again, it doesn't cost us anything anyway, so...
Right. Thank you for your support. We appreciate it. I also have a recent article, just from a couple of days ago, from the Providence Business News. I'd be happy to share that.
Please do.
Yeah. If you choose to support and provide, you know, a letter or some sort of statement of commitment, we do need it by the end of the day on Friday to be able to submit it with our proposal at the beginning of the week.
I don't think that should be an issue or problem. We can get something out.
I believe we have the, I have your email address. Yes, we'll send it.
So you could take care of that?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Anyone have any questions at this point in time?
I just have one, if I may. The commitment from the city at this point doesn't sound like it's going to really be anything meaningful, other than giving you permission to come in, do the assessment, let us know if this is something that will possibly bear fruit.
Collaborate with you on the assessment, perhaps you would share some information with us. I know the city is continuously assessing the needs of its residents. We're doing the same thing. Perhaps in the future, help us get the word out to the community about what's happening. There's no investment of money at this point.
Okay. And this is, just as a reminder, this is on as a vote for just a letter of support.
Mr. President, I had sent an email, a letter of support individually already, and I would make a motion that we, as a council, do so and ask that the clerk develop that letter and send it out for us, so I'd make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second it.
Let's be a seconded. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodriks.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you, and we'll get that out to you at the latest Friday morning.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, on a related matter, and we're good, thanks. I do notice that there was one letter of support attached in the packet, voicing support for this particular issue. Just in general, it might be a good idea for those community agencies submitting letters of support to actually sign their letters or indicate who they're from, because there really wasn't any of that information in the letter that was provided to us, so...
Okay. Thank you. Let me just assist the city clerk out here. Next item will be public comment, and I noticed that we have the sheet. Anyone here? Would you first, that off as the first person, please?
Yes, we have Sarah Zurier and Janet Boletto.
Please step up to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here to tell you and also you about the statewide historic preservation conference that will be hosted by East Providence on April 6th. We've been delighted, I work with the Rhode Island Historical Preservation and Heritage Commission, and every year, we come to a different Rhode Island community to showcase historic preservation projects, get to know local organizations that are doing good work in this field, and, you know, show off the historic neighborhoods and places and businesses of your community. It's our first year in East Providence after 34 years, so I just wanted to let you all know that it's happening. We'll be at Haven Church and the Grand Masonic Lodge across the street. We'll actually be in City Hall, and then we're going to have bus tours all over the city, walking tours. We'll even be on boats going up and down the Seacong River and Narragansett Bay, really showing off the best of East Providence, and our theme this year is preservation, recreation, and sports. So we're looking at places like the indoor tennis court and Agawam Hunt, and of course, the Carousel. So I just would welcome you all to join us, and if you have any questions about the event, we've got postcards with a website and are happy to answer any questions.
In addition to you coming up here in public comment and speaking on behalf of this, we could see to it as a council that you get more publicity by mentioning it in the next meeting up, leading up to this event, and I've worked with Nancy, Nancy Moore on this as well over the past several months, so I'm quite familiar with what's going on here and what's happening, but it's great that you can come up here and express that with everyone else that might not be familiar with the sense that, you know, for the first time, the city is hosting this event, so, thank you.
Yes, and if anybody would like to join us, just give us, give Janet or me a call, and we'd be glad to get you registered and join us, so it'll be a lot of fun for East Providence.
Very good.
Yeah, there are more postcards out outside. And Diane, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Next person, please.
Ken Gousha? Gousha, sorry, Ken, thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you just state your name?
My name is Ken Gousha. I live on Brown Street. I'm a volunteer at East Province Senior Center, have been for 17 years now. The weird out is that they're going to combine the Recreation Center and East Province Senior Center to make it one community center. Everybody at the senior center that I have talked to is worried what's going to happen to the seniors. I volunteer a card game. I'm the president of pool league. If this Recreation Center has the run of that building, I don't think that we should be paying dues. I don't think they should pay money to use the weight room, because it sounds to me like the children are going to have the run of the show. At 2:00 in the afternoon when they get out of school, we get along with teenagers, but do teenagers get along with seniors? That's the big thing, and I wish that Mr. De Silva, the mayor, would cancel this and leave it everything the way it was.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I have to say, and I hope it goes through, that, matter of fact, it's on television, and I'd like to see it myself, so, thank you.
We thank you for your time.
And that's all we have for public comment.
Okay. Next item?
Appointments, Mary Dwyer, 55 Spring Street, 02915, Conservation Commission.
And who is this appointment? Yes, yes.
Yes, this is for a vote.
That's my appointment.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any objections, or would you like to say anything, or would you just, I mean, ordinarily, we just go up for a vote? I mean, we could, which is fine, so...
This has been on the docket for a while.
No, no problem.
We could just... Had table last week.
Okay.
Keeping the consistency with the orders.
Yeah. Anyone like to make a motion for this appointment?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Cahoon. Anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Rodriks. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodriks.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Stephen Hardcastle, 20 Beechtree Road, 02916, Waterfront Commission for vote. This is sponsored by Council Vice President Rodriks.
Mr. President, it was brought to my attention that I would have an appointment to the Waterfront Commission from the at-large seat, and although I was about to seek residents' interest in this seat, I was informed that Mr. Hardcastle, who is currently there and his seat is expiring, would like to continue. So in the, in the spirit of continuity for the Waterfront Commission, and I did speak with members of the commission and did a little bit of checking, and they said not only is Mr. Hardcastle, whom I don't know personally, but not only has he been a very viable member of the commission, he's also their treasurer. So it didn't seem to make sense to me to replace him with just a nominal appointment, so therefore, by way of explanation, I would move that Mr. Stephen Hardcastle be reappointed to his seat on the Waterfront Commission.
Thank you, councilman. So we do have a motion on the floor at this point in time to reappoint Mr. Hardcastle. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodriks.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Richard Lawson, 19 Plum Road, 02915, Waterfront Commission for vote. Oh, and Councilman Murato is sponsoring.
Okay.
That's all I have to say, and I hope it goes through, that, matter of fact, it's on television, and I'd like to see it myself, so, thank you.
We thank you for your time.
And that's all we have for public comment.
Okay. Next item?
Appointments. Mary Dwyer, 55 Spring Street, 02915, Conservation Commission.
And who was this appointment? Yes, yes.
Yes, this is for a vote.
That's my appointment.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any objections, or would you like to say anything, or would you just, I mean, ordinarily, we just go up for a vote? I mean, we could, which is fine, so.
This has been on the docket for a while.
No, no problem.
We could just. Table last week.
Okay.
Keeping the consistency with the orders.
Yeah. Anyone like to make a motion for this appointment?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Cahoon. Anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Rodrick. Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Next item, please.
Stephen Hardcastle, 20 Beechtree Road, 02916, Waterfront Commission for vote. This is sponsored by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Mr. President, it was brought to my attention that I would have an appointment to the Waterfront Commission from the at-large seat, and although I was about to seek residents' interest in this seat, I was informed that Mr. Hardcastle, who is currently there and his seat is expiring, would like to continue. So, in the, in the spirit of continuity for the Waterfront Commission, and I did speak with members of the commission and did a little bit of checking, and they said not only is Mr. Hardcastle, whom I don't know personally, but not only has he been a very viable member of the commission, he's also their treasurer. So, it didn't seem to make sense to me to replace him with just a nominal appointment. So, therefore, by way of explanation, I would move that Mr. Stephen Hardcastle be reappointed to his seat on the Waterfront Commission.
Thank you, Councilman. So we do have a, a motion on the floor at this point in time to reappoint Mr. Hardcastle. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilman Vice Pres, or Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
Richard Lawson, 19 Plum Road, 02915, Waterfront Commission for vote. Oh, and Councilman Morado is sponsoring.
Okay.
So Mr. Lawson has shown interest in being a member of that board. He has served in many other boards and commissions, on being the Arts Council, the Veterans Advisory Committee. He was a former member of the Carousel Committee. He was on the Beautification Committee, the Riverside Renaissance. I think he'll be a good fit for that committee, and it's, therefore, that's, I want to point that out for a vote.
Councilman, would you like to make a, a motion?
I can make a motion to appoint Richard Lawson to the Waterfront Commission.
Thank you. So we do have a motion on the floor from Councilman Morado to appoint Mr. Lawson on the Waterfront Commission. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. That concludes, that concludes appointments. Moving right along to council members' communication. Madam Clerk.
Council Rules and Regulation. Council President Brito, this is for a vote.
So this has been on the docket for, since the inception of this council, and we finally, after the last council finalized it with communications, essentially keeping communications as it is and public comment as well. Everything else was agreed upon prior to, so now, as a package, we need to just put this all together, put it to rest, and take it off the docket moving forward with a vote on this.
Mr. President, I'd just like to note one thing. Under Rule 4, Item A, I just noticed that paragraph still makes reference to city manager.
Yes.
So, I'm not sure if the intent of that rule is to indicate council president or the mayor. It seems to reference someone who's an active participant in the council meetings, which I would submit would not be the mayor.
And I had shared that also with the city solicitor, and with some other minor changes as well, referencing, changing he to he or she and city manager as well, so it's not on that, that rule, it's on the Rule 3.
Or he should be city, city president. It's a compromise. Right, that's what it seemed to me, so I think, you know, if we.
We made the change early enough.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I know, I think if, you know, and actually, if, you know, we get to, we can make that a part, a part of the motion as well.
And, and while we're making that part of the motion as well, then, with that being said, the other rules that I had mentioned to you as well?
Yes, as well.
Rule 3, the Decorum Debates, the second paragraph, he should be he, not she. Rule 4, Consent Docket for this paragraph, when the city manager, again, which I'm referencing this evening. And Rule 5, miscellaneous provision, Section B, Section B, which refers to the city manager as well. So if we can make those changes based on that amendment, we can still continue to vote and pass this through this evening.
So I move to approve the rules contingent upon those changes being made.
So we have a motion on the floor to proceed with this vote this evening based on the amendments, Rules 3, 4, and 5. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Rodrick. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
With appreciation to the council president for all of your hard work in getting this started and getting this done, I want to thank you for these changes, and I vote aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you. And part of that package also was moving the time from 7:00 to start time from 7:00 to 6:30. Moving right along, next, next item, please.
Boards and Commissions. Zoning Board of Review, Charter Subpart A, Article 2, Section 2-14, Councilwoman Souza.
Would you want to speak?
If it's the pleasure, if it's your pleasure, I can, yes. I'm, I'm completely ready.
Okay, so this is not going on for a vote this evening, however, the city clerk would just like to share with the public is the conversation that she had with the councilwoman.
So Councilwoman Souza was originally gonna speak on this tonight. She's absent, we hope she feels better. But, speaking on the zoning board review, after doing some research on it, there's a few things that I did want to go ahead and share with the people and with the council as well. So the zoning board is a five-year appointment. There are two mayoral appointments in which both members cannot live in the same ward. Currently, as it stands, the mayoral appointments do not. Richard Croke lives in Ward 2, Gary Pasqua lives in Ward 3. However, Richard's appointment has been expired since August 20th, 2018. There are five council appointments. The only appointment that has expired is in Ward 2. Councilwoman does have the authority to appoint if she sees fit. It does not have to pass with, it does need to pass with a majority from the council, as per most council appointments. John Braga's appointment expired on June 5th, 2018. It is the council's right and privilege to appoint the chair for this board. Currently, Jean Savery is the chair. In regards to representation, out of the seven seats on this board, there is one voting female, and the rest are males. And, not to say we're done to the Waterfront Commission, but it, it does seem to lack diverse representation reflective of our East Providence community. The current members are Michael Bo Parland, Ward 1, Vice Chairman, sorry, John Braga, Ward 2, Pierre Marie Toledo, Ward 3, she serves as the secretary, Eugene Savery, Ward 4, Chairman, Antonio Cunha, at-large, Richard Croke, First Alternate, Gary Pasqua, Alternate 2. And that's, that's all I have for the board.
Any questions?
Council President, I did provide this council tonight pretty much a summary of what the clerk just read, or just read from the Councilwoman Souza, given the appointing authority, the statutory authority for all the appointments. The only thing that I would add to the clerk's litany is that the, under the ordinance that's currently on the books, there is a procedure before appointments can be made, the posting requirements for all city boards and commissions, that would include the zoning board. That was not in place for the Waterfront Commission, because that's a state board. But you have an ordinance that we're gonna discuss later tonight about how to get appointments to boards and commissions. So that process would need to be filed before any appointment is made to this board, to the zoning board. And again, I, this is just a little cheat sheet for the, the council, kind of outlines everything I was just said to you, and when we move off of this, if, I know that it's council's idea to do a board a month, basically, a board of meetings, so I don't know what the next board will be, but, so we can get this in advance, so you can have it in advance. I'd like to know that beforehand. That's a good point. Did we establish an order previously, did we establish who was number three?
Yes, we do have a rotating calendar, and actually, I can, I'll send that to everybody, including the solicitor, so we can all prepare ahead of time.
Mr. Solicitor.
We can do that move forward.
Okay.
To the council president, does, this doesn't conflict with the charter, does it, in any way?
That's from the charter.
Okay. Because the, I thought it was a mayor appointment approved by the council, according to charter.
No, the, the charter basically, the charter says that, I could see why you would read it that way, but it's at mayor appointment, really referring to the alternate members.
Okay, so mayor appointment approved by the council.
Alternates only. So, one of the things that I know the city clerk read, that some of the people's terms have expired, but the ordinance, the ordinance that is also very clear that a member continues to serve until a qualified person is put in their place. So, unless, unless an appointment is made, that person will serve out until a new appointment is made. The issue then becomes from a calculating point, is what the net new term is. It's a five-year term, so I would read it from the date of the expiration of that person's term would be whatever's remaining of that person's, whatever the appointment would be ever, whatever would be the five years remaining. So if you were, if you're a holdover for a year, and someone else gets appointed to that seat, you're gonna serve for four years.
The balance of.
The balance of it, yes, yes.
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, one other point, and apparently, this is a little odd, but every time that there's an appointment to the board for, of a permanent member by the council, the council has a right to change the chair, apparently. You can, you can appoint the chair every time, anytime that there's a, a new member or a reappointment of an existing member, the council can change the chair of the zoning board.
So, if I appoint someone today, and someone appoints someone the next meeting, you can change the chair?
That's, that's.
Musical chairs?
That's how the ordinance reads. I don't know.
That needs to be changed. Okay. Any, any further discussion?
I will say that it's a very important board, and the current board is, I've served as council to many zoning boards across the state, and I will say, and not because Mr. Savery's in the audience, but it's one of the, it's one of the best zoning boards in the state of Rhode Island, as far as the knowledge of the law and how they run their meetings. So I will say that as a, from a lawyer's perspective, my job is pretty easy when I go to those meetings.
Yeah, he does do a fine job. Thank you, Mr. Savery. Thank you, Mr. City Solicitor. Next item, please.
Community fundraisers. In lieu of Councilwoman Souza's absence, she's asked Council Vice President Rodrick to speak on behalf for the fundraiser.
Thank you. I did just receive an email, I guess she's not feeling well, and it talks about, this will require some reading glasses. I guess there's a fundraiser this Saturday, March 23rd. This involves the Crescent Park Carousel, and the fundraiser is for that depot project and the, the train and all the things they've been talking about for years. So, the public is invited this Saturday at the Brightridge Club in the new, the back hall on 59 Brightridge Avenue for pasta, meatballs, bread and butter salad, the typical lodge pasta dinner fundraiser, and there will also be music and entertainment. Tickets are $12 for adults, children 6 to 12, $6. And if child is six, under six, it is free. So that will be this Saturday, March 23rd, 6 to 8:00. I guess it's short, dinner. Says 6:00 PM till 8:00 PM at the Brightridge Club Back Hall, and this is 100% to benefit the Crescent Park Depot Project.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Snow sidewalk safety discussion, Councilman Cahoon.
So, I brought this up at the last meeting. I've been being on this for four years on the school committee. There are a number of folks, I think, that do an excellent job at clearing their sidewalks and business areas of snow and ice when we have a snowfall. There are some fantastic neighbors who help out their neighbors, you know, in, in the instance that they may not be able to get out there and do it themselves, but there are far too many folks who just completely ignore that responsibility altogether. The end result is, in many cases, you know, I take it from the school perspective, there's a lot of kids working, walking on busy roads, forced to walk in the street, Pawtucket Avenue, Warren Avenue, Broadway. I think we can all agree that we don't want kids walking on those streets, or trying to struggle over a pile of snow and falling into the street. You know, it wasn't, we're not too far removed from an incident in Cranston a couple of years ago where, you know, a kid was, was killed by a bus as a result of something like that. So, I've been working with Mark Furtado, who actually took a first pass at trying to tighten up the ordinance. Section 14-40 is fairly clear on the responsibilities of property owners to clear sidewalks in front of their property of snow and ice. There are a couple of loopholes, if you will, you know, it's not clear in, in many cases whether it's the owner, the occupant, or the, you know, perhaps the property manager who has that responsibility. So, you know, Mark's craft is some language that he and I are gonna continue to work on, tighten that up. Ultimately, what I'd like to see, is I'd like to see an ordinance that's enforced. There are a number of entities in the city that I've noticed are repeat offenders, in that they never, ever, ever touch their sidewalks, and I think we can all agree that that's no good. There are issues such as, you know, requirements to kind of clear out the, the cutouts going on to the street for those, you know, townies that are, you know, sort of confined to wheelchairs or motorized vehicles, you know, folks who shovel their sidewalk, it's great, but if there's a gigantic mountain at the end of the street, no way to get out and to the next sidewalk, that's not very helpful. So, we're trying to consider all of that type stuff, and come next, next meeting, I think we'll be ready to present an ordinance for first passage. So, just wanted to give you guys a heads up.
Thank you, Councilman. And that's important with that snow on the corner piled up, because it creates a hazard a couple of ways. One, for the traffic coming in the direction at, at that intersection, they can't see over, number one, so they have to edge out a little more and more into the main street. And then, two, that's where the sidewalk transitions for handicap accessibility as well. So, with that being said, look forward to that ordinance. Anyone have any questions regarding that? I know I had some calls on that, but thank you, Councilman Cahoon. Next item, please.
Monthly finance report discussion, Councilman Cahoon.
So, based on previous meeting, previous council meeting, and sort of the, the pleasure of the council, if you will, I began my first of a number of meetings with Mayor De Silva, Malcolm Moore, and I appreciate both of them providing their time on a Friday afternoon, which is one of the few times that I actually can get together and meet. We sat down this past Friday, and we specifically looked on a line-by-line basis at the city council, city manager, and mayoral lines of the budget, the approved budget, get an understanding of what are the definitions of those budgeted lines. If you take a look at the budget, there are some things that, you know, maybe you don't understand what they are, like what's the purpose of a gas and petroleum line in the mayoral budget? Probably not much use to anybody. You know, things like that, that, when we come to the end of the year, and we are, you know, beholden to approve or, you know, adjust the mayoral budget within a 45-day window, we don't really have a whole lot of time to, to get these answers, to figure out what these things are, and what are we gonna meet, once, twice, maybe three times during that, during that, that window. So, what I'd like to, to continue doing, and the mayor's offered this time up, and I think it's gonna be very useful, is kind of one department at a time, you know, we have this one commissioner board at a time, but one department at a time, I'm gonna sit with, with Malcolm, the mayor, and the applicable department head to kind of review their budget, get an understanding of what all of those lines are, and I'd like to provide, you know, kind of my written notes to the council, so, you know, you can use those as you see fit. Set them aside, you know, when it comes time to do our budget workshops, or, and then if you have issues about, or questions about whether or not we can adjust a particular line, you know, that would be, that would be the appropriate way, I think, to tackle that. You know, there are things in here that, you know, I was kind of surprised to find that, you know, for example, the council receives a telephone allowance as part of their stipend to the tune of $4,200 a year. I say, well, I mean, I think we all have phones that probably can find a better use for $4,200. I don't know, it's just me. You know, there's, there's also an expenditure associated with the air cards, you know, the cellular card that goes along with our iPads. You know, maybe that's something we want to take a, a look at. Do we actually need that? Can we get by with wireless? Do we actually need our iPads? I don't know, but I mean, if we look at our own budget, I think, you know, I think we kind of take a lead on encouraging the other departments to do the same. Madam Clerk, I, I actually recommended to the, to the mayor that we take a look at the clerk's budget at the very next session, and Patricia actually scheduled those for the Fridays following council meetings, so our next one would actually be this coming Friday. So, and I think she scheduled that for 3:30. So, in any event, I've got some written notes I'm happy to share with you all, based on, you know, what I found and what we discussed. If at any point, you know, you want me to, to get into any of the details, that's fine too, but I thought I could share this with all of you, and then, if you have any questions, we can go from there.
To, to the chair, question, you mentioned the $4,200, is that just cellphone, or is that the salary?
It's, it's $4,200 associated with line 51141, which is entitled Phone Allowance, and per my discussion with Malcolm, that the intent of that phone allowance And per my discussion with Malcolm, that the intent of that phone allowance, when it was established, was to provide an additional stipend on top of the council stipend so that they could, you know, pay for their phones because they use their phones in the service of the city. Now I submit that I'm going to have my phone anyway. I mean, doesn't matter if a constituent calls me or my wife calls me.
Right.
No. So, I mean, is that $4,200 we could send back to the Treasury and do something better with? I would submit that probably yes, it is. So, I mean, as we find things like this, you know, and these things over time, you know, I, I don't mean to, I'm not trying to disparage the work that was done in the past. I'm really not. And I've read through that, the approved budget from last year several times. I think that was an enormously difficult task, especially for, you know, the city manager at the time to take that on, to kind of separate the 10-year, the 10-month versus the two-month city manager versus mayoral budget, to break out budget items that had never existed before. You know, and I think that they, by and large, they did a very good job, but I think it's our job to get it as close to perfect as possible. So that's what I'd like to continue trying to do.
Through the chair. Councilman Cahoon, I want to thank you for taking that task, something that we've talked about many times before. But I got a couple of questions. And maybe it's for the, the rest of council, if anyone knows or solicitor. Do we start off every, with every budget at a zero base? We don't?
We do not.
Should we?
Well, I'm going to give you my take, right? In an ideal world, you should be building up a budget from the ground up, a zero-based budget. I mean, I think that that's probably the accounting ideal for any municipality. It's enormously difficult to do. It's, it would be a huge sea change from the way that we've done budgets here in the past. I mean, I think the school department did it to an extent. It took a couple of years really to, to, to start building and they built from the school level up through, you know, the secondary and elementary and then finally to administration, where the, you know, the principals really had the input on what was needed for their buildings. That would be, it would be a departure from the way that we've done budgeting in the past. I mean, I, you know, we certainly could discuss that. My sense is that that might be sort of a bridge too far in the early going. And I think if we concentrate on, you know, what's this line? How long has this line been sitting here and getting funded and not really being used for anything? Probably years. You know, let's, let's figure out, you know, where we need to allocate the funds.
And the, the phone stipend, how long, how hard was it to find that? Was it like immediately or?
No, I just, I mean, I just went line, but basically I went line by line. And if I didn't understand what a line was for, I mean, some of these lines are fairly straightforward. Salaries, got it. You know, the associated FICA, Medicare benefits, that's pretty simple. But when you see things like phone allowance, public celebrations, there's another one. Well, what does that mean? You know, why is there a public celebrations line under the council budget for $3,200? For, for what? You know? You know, and I know, I know, I know maybe there used to be different things that the council did, but, you know, I think that that's probably up to the council to decide whether or not we want to continue to allocate $3,200 for public celebrations.
So as I said before, I mean, this goes back to why we need to simplify that budget so we can find stuff and have discussions on it. However, a hundred and eighty-something million dollar budget and we as taxpayers, you know, where our money goes to.
One of the things that both the mayor and Malcolm were very excited about, and I'm actually excited about too, is they were discussing a particular system that they're looking at and they're speaking with a particular provider, you know, the possibility of, of having that system in place to provide transparency, to provide budgeting, to kind of automatically take care of this stuff that the city's been doing manually forever. And it's going to be, it's going to allow, you know, not just us to, you know, pull up the budget here on the screen, but it's going to allow, you know, citizens to go and say, all right, where's my money going here? What's the expenditure here? And I think from what I heard, it sounds like that's fairly close. So I think to your point, Councilman Murato, the mayor is focused on, on getting that in place, so, which was good news to me.
I could tell you, Councilman, the celebration portion of the council, if I'm not mistaken, that had everything to do with the inauguration.
Well, I don't think so. There's only been $510 spent out of it so far and I think the inauguration was more than $510.
Well, that's what, that was the intent. What we, what they did this time is they received private funding for the inauguration this time around.
Right, right.
So that's why you'll see more in there and not-
Right.
-be totally used.
And I'm, I'm not-
Right.
-picking on a particular budget item from the, you know, but if there's going to be an allocation, you know, and we're not going, you know, part-time pay, for example. So the city manager put aside $25,000 for part-time pay in the event that the mayor, upon transition, needed to hire somebody on a part-time basis to come in and, you know, help out, whatever. No one, no one really knew, you know, who knows what it takes to go from a city manager to a mayoral forum. But we come to the end of the year and we say, hey, there's $25,000 sitting in a line for part-time pay. We probably can be sure that we don't need the part-time pay line next year, right? And that's kind of what I'm trying to, trying to get to. So like I said, I'm going to write that up. I'll provide it to the council. You guys can provide whatever questions that you want to me. Like I said, the mayor's made himself available on those recurring Fridays. So, and I'm happy to follow up on any particular line or any element of the budget that you're interested in, but I like this idea of being able to go one department at a time, being able to focus one meeting and kind of starting with, you know, the more compact budgets before we get into more complex things like the police department, the fire department. I think the school department is a completely different entity and we can probably have them come and report at any time if you want. But this is the way that I'm, I'm going to try to keep that momentum going. So any, any feedback that you have, please let me know.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for the good work as well. Next item, please. Before we proceed this evening, we have the attorney that's here on behalf of the Caldwell Project. But we're going to, we're going to table this, if I'm not mistaken, we're going to table this discussion. However, if you want to come up, you know, quickly, well, at the pleasure of the council, before I invite you up here-
Joe, no objection.
... just move this up real quickly. The, we were planning to table in this discussion for the next meeting. However, I was unaware that you were still here. I thought that was already brought to your attention. I would have got you up-
Mr. President, thank you for the courtesy. I very much appreciate it. You know, this was a public hearing and I know there is somebody here, so we'd appreciate it if it would be continued to a date certain as a result that the, you know, the people are here would know about it and it would not have to be advertised and another cost incurred.
We could put it on for the next council meeting.
Mr., yeah, Mr. President, can I, can I, can I move to set that on the docket for the next, the very next council meeting?
Ten. I believe it's, it's up to the council. Mr. Gary would request a, a meeting of May 21st. Table to May 21st. It's up to you if you want, if you want to honor a request.
I'll accept that amendment. So it's May 21st.
Second.
All right. So we're going to table this discussion. If we can just put this back on to the docket for May 21st?
Of course.
I'm sorry?
Yes, of course.
Okay. All right. Maybe we have a real call vote on that, considering that we have a motion and second motion?
Absolutely. Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Council President Murato?
Aye.
We're tabling the amendment to the comp plan and the proposed zoning amendment. So we're tabling two things to the May 21st. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the courtesy. I very much appreciate it.
I'm sorry you had to wait this long. We could have moved you up earlier, sooner.
Thank you. I'm going to the nine o'clock Providence College game, so I've got to be-
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next item? City Sergeant Discussion, Council Vice President Rodrick.
Council President, I guess we'll probably hold this off too until subsequent meeting. By way of explanation, I would just state that the city council has had a city sergeant at its meeting since its incorporation in 1958. There were always appointments of the council. It seems like the city solicitor and the president are finding that a lot of ordinances don't say what we always thought they said. And I'm being told that they can't even find an ordinance that addresses a city sergeant at all. And yet we've had city sergeants here and they've been getting paid and so it's being researched. I appreciate the solicitor's office and the mayor's office staying in touch with the council on this and with myself. So it's not a, a major thing, you know, we'll, we'll get to it, but we're either going to have one or not have one. You know, my initial opinion is in, in this day and age of security-conscious public meetings, we should have in addition to a police presence, a city sergeant who helps with delivering communications and a little bit of order in the room. But if we deem that we don't need one, we won't need one. But in any event, that's why we're not appointing one or voting on it because no one can find an ordinance that addresses it. And we're working on a, a new one. So I would, I don't know if we need a motion to defer, just let it go for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Next item, please.
Status of Pierce Field Discussion, Council Vice President Rodrick.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. President, I would try to briefly state that I continue to be concerned with the condition of the one and only major recreation complex in East Providence. Pierce Stadium, which was bequeathed to the city of East Providence, the youth of East Providence by the Pierce family a long, long time ago, has been neglected quite a bit through the years. I, I know through the campaign before being elected, I addressed the last council and thankfully, not because of that, but there have been some improvements. But I have been meeting with staff there, talking with the mayor's office, talking with fellow council, and before anyone says, is, is this a frivolous thing? Why are we talking about a recreational thing? Well, tell that to any number of the thousands of people who have enjoyed Pierce Stadium through the years. I go back to the 60s when I was very active there with family in Little League and I still have a scrapbook with letters from people from all over New England who visited here for tournaments and would write letters about the condition of Pierce Stadium being so good. And through the years, that condition has continued, except recently and when the Budget Commission came, but it wasn't just them. It was also local people who neglected it, didn't put money. It took over a year to get bathrooms fixed. At the recent summer fireworks with, I don't know, 12,000 people there or more maybe, bathrooms weren't working. There was a line of porta johns, you know, unacceptable. And they finally were ordered and I went there this week and they've been fixed and painted and there's new stainless steel fixtures and everything looks good, but it sure took a long time. Things have been done, that's good. There are things that have not been done yet and have been approved. For instance, there is absolutely no surveillance at the stadium and money and a approval was granted to put that in there, cameras. I'm told this week that the vandalism is out of hand. Now because of the acts of a few, it doesn't mean the many who enjoy Pierce Stadium should suffer. And the surveillance cameras, I'm told that were approved back in November anyway, would have some direct contact to continuity to the police station and they could see things happening live and send someone right there. The police certainly can't park themselves there all the time. So I am going to ask for a meeting with the mayor and see, and I did talk with him briefly today and, and he said he certainly is aware and wants to expedite a lot of this stuff. So we, we need to find out if it's been approved, money's been allocated, at least order it. Let's, let's get it done. We went a whole season last year without a scoreboard in the football field. Sounds frivolous to some people, maybe, not to the thousands who use that stadium. The high school, out of their own sports budget, had to rent a little scoreboard, put it on a little table out in, way out past the goalposts, which no one could see. And they had to rent a portable PA system, you know, not acceptable. It finally got ordered and installed after the season was completed. So now that's done and that's fixed, but now the baseball complex, the big field, is the same issue, been neglected. There, the PA system isn't working, the scoreboard's not working. The fencing, the rusting old fencing is curling up and going to pose injuries. That needs to be replaced. There, there are other things that need to be done there. A lot of this stuff has been approved and, and this is stuff a lot of, of us are just finding out, so I'm not blaming anyone here. I don't even want to get into blaming people in the past. Let's just move forward and fix this stuff. This is Pierce Stadium that we're either going to let it go or we're going to get it back to the condition that it, it should be in. There is no internet, no computer connectivity for the manager of the complex. He's trying to do work and of course he's saying, you know, I, I don't want to complain directly, but I was told the technology was approved. I don't have a computer. He's using his home phone. He doesn't have internet capability which would allow usage of the software which controls the permitting of the field. So logistically, if I want to go there, John or Jane Q. Public goes to his office at the field and says, I need to get a permit and rent the field. He has to physically send them to the senior center. The senior center staff calls back to the Pierce Field Office and says, somebody here wants to use the field. He said, yeah, I know, I just sent them to you. Well, is the field free? Yes, it's free. All right, I'm going to send them back with the permit. This is 2019. He should have, or she, it's a he right now, should have the authority, he's got to give out the permits. He already has done 178 permits for baseball going forward. So the work is done, but he needs to have the internet capability. So these are a lot of the, it sounds like little things to the average person, and I won't go on through everything there. There has been $100,000 put aside for handicapped accessibility, it's not started yet, yet. It's, it's a problem for a lot of people. A lot of work that, that has to be done. And the funding, I, when I was involved with the school apartment, always agreed that if you have a dance studio renting your auditorium, that that rental fee should stay in an auditorium account, or at least 90% of it, so you can replenish the curtains, fix the floor, do whatever you have to do. Same thing at Pierce Stadium. All of these people who rent the fields, and we used to have colleges, they've all pulled out, a lot of them because of the condition, but if you're renting the field, that money should stay in a Pierce Stadium account. We're not sure that it, that it is anymore. There's money from Verizon, from the cellphone towers at Pierce Field. You know, we want to find out where, where that's going. And other things, I, I won't take more time. I would end by saying there used to be a recreation board in, in the community. Now talking about the president's drive to clean up, um, ordinances and boards, it seems like there's something on paper, but it's dormant and the, and the members aren't there. I want to see that we get that board activated again. It used to have presidents of all the youth groups in the city involved and then members in the general public and then some department heads. And just like the Carousel has a commission and Hunts Mills and Historical Society and others, we need a recreation, a board to be active once again. So I'm going to report back to everybody when I meet with the mayor and see about some of these things. And remember, this isn't frivolous. Ask those thousands of kids and young adults and adults who use that complex and had the attorney say right now, I had to hurry up to go see the PC game. Recreation counts in, in this city and we, we've got to get that- Recreation counts in this city, and we've got to get that stadium back to where it once was and make it the jewel that it can be.
Councilman?
Yeah, if I may. First of all, thank you, Bob, for taking this on. Just so everybody understands how frivolous it's not, I spent half my life, right, with either the junior townies on the football field, or E.P. Central Little League on the baseball field over there, right? And we started tryouts for Central Little League this Saturday, finished tryouts at Martin, have to go over to the concession stand, which just got broken into and trashed just because somebody could, threw, you know, sprinkles everywhere, broke the cotton candy machine. Why? Because there's nobody to watch them, right? So, I mean, that's a great, the Fields Crew, the Grounds Crew does an incredible job. If you see, like, kids that come from, like, one socket in Pawtucket to come play on our field for football, they can't believe that there's a grass field that looks like this anymore anywhere in the state. But then you go to the restroom, right? And you're like, "Ah, got it." Right? So, thanks for taking this on. I mean, it's not frivolous. Sports education, the opportunity to play, is a big part of development of, you know, all of our kids, helping them become responsible adults, and then they pass that on to their own. So, you know, this is really important. Thanks for taking it on.
Just one final thing. We no longer have security personnel there. We used to have one guy, two guys. They didn't make a lot of money, but they were there during peak hours into the evening. And you can't have a facility that's open. We let people come, walk the track, do things, and there's nobody there. Try to go into Cranston Stadium, or La Salle's Field, or North Kingston High School's new turf field, or Hendrick's Field. Try to just walk in, and you'll see five people come over. "Oh, can I help you? What are you doing here?" You know, Pierce, it's like Statue of Liberty, you know?
Councilman, I would recommend to keep this on the docket. That's the best way for follow-up. We do this in construction. When a task isn't completed, it remains on the docket until, remains under minutes until it is completed. So, keep it on the docket, I would suggest, going forward. And that way, you have a better follow-up. Every two weeks, there at least, something being done. But otherwise, it's going to start to look like the Roman Coliseum in Italy pretty soon. Thank you. Next item, please.
Community Workshop Regarding Sewer Rate Increase Options, Councilman Murato.
So, we've been given, we've been handed this task from the previous council in regards to sewer rate changes. And one of the plans that, moving forward, that, there's been many discussions in the past council as to which rate the council should vote on. And I paid a lot of attention to that while I sat in the audience, but now we're given that responsibility moving forward as to which one of these rates we, as a council, will have to have the task and working through it to pick. And I just want to make this public and to the rest of council members that I think moving forward, I feel that there's quite a few questions that would need to be answered first before we even start discussing sewer rates. Some of the work that I've looked into and researched, for example, I believe that questions such as, would it be more beneficial as a city to have our own employees, for example, run the sewer plant again? And we may know the answer to that question, but it's an answer, a question that needs to be answered. And these are questions, by the way, that I feel a consultant should be looking into, because they're tough questions to look into. For example, I attended a meeting, Councilman Kahoon and I attended a meeting a few, a couple of months ago now, and I was always under the impression that the city pays Suez $5 million to operate the sewer plant. But apparently, we pay actually $18 million, because we pay electrical costs, we pay Narragansett Bay Commission costs, we pay the previous bond. We pay a lot of money, which totals up to $18 million, and that's just with the Riverside Plant. I don't know if many of the public is aware. We also have another plant in, that's run by Narragansett Bay Commission in Rumford. And our situation with Narragansett Bay is the same situation that Barrington has with us in our Riverside Plant. They pay us to, you know, to have their sewage dump at the Riverside as we pay Rumford residents, and I believe some Pawtucket residents also pay into that Rumford, Narragansett Bay Plant in Rumford. Other questions that I would like answered, it's, there are possibilities, when this goes up for a rebid, an RFP, are there other companies out there that we could save with? Is it more beneficial, for example, if Narragansett Bay Commission takes over the Riverside Plant? My point being is that, moving forward, I think these questions should be answered first. And if we're going to have a workshop, we all need to be reeducated on, for us and the public, as to why we need to have these rates. You know, this is something that should be taken slowly and methodically. We should really do our due diligence to, before we go and raise some of these rates or have one of these plans. And who knows, maybe after these questions are answered, maybe there'll be a different plan, or a slight change in the previous, for plans that were proposed to the previous council. I just feel that, you know, we're already taxed as a city, and to have another increase without doing our due diligence on raising these rates, that's not fair to the taxpayers. We have a lot of seniors in the city that are already struggling as it is with some of these taxes and water rates. So, we really need to slow it down a little bit when it comes to these conversations coming up and in their future. And I think this next, I believe there's a workshop that's already been planned for March 26. And I don't want to throw anyone on the bus or sound, you know, negative, but I really wish that that was first discussed with the council as to, are we all available? And just, you know, strongly encouraged to attend doesn't work for me. We should attend and make sure that we're all available to attend these workshops. That's all I have.
If I may, Mr. President?
Please.
I know that Councilman Murato has paid a lot of attention to this particular issue, has done a lot of work. You know, he and I have had many discussions. The reason that this is so critically important now is, we signed with Suez a 10-year, a contract for a 10-year initial term with a 10-year option. Well, guess what? The 10-year initial term is expiring next year. The 10-year option has, you know, terms for renewal. You know, those terms require us to do things, like if we are going to continue to move forward with Suez, to renegotiate what we're paying them in terms of fee. And so, that everybody understands, citywide, I do understand that this is something of a mystery to people, how their, you know, bill can be this high, how their sewer bill can go this high. Currently, the rate, the sewer rate, is tied to the water utilization rate, right? So, people figure out that, "Oh, I better use less water, and I'm going to, you know, have much less of a bill," right? Well, to the city, we just wind up taking in less revenue for sewer, and we still have to pay Suez the exact same amount every single month. So, you can see the disconnect there, right? I know that we've had this discussion. That's part of what should be discussed when we have this whole rates talk. Plus, it's not really fair for folks who are watering their grass, et cetera, to be assessed, you know, a fee against that water, because that water's not going down the drain. It's not being treated. So, all of that, I think, has to be thought about, and whether, you know, the city chooses to go out for bid, or the city chooses to exercise that term by way of negotiation. Whatever that decision is, it's going to require us to be educated so that we don't simply find ourselves in a less than perfect situation again.
Thank you, Councilman. Next item, please.
Just in addition to build upon what Councilman Murato was speaking on, I just want to let the public know that we will go ahead and file with the Secretary of State, since it will be, it will be a meeting, and to be in alignment with the Open Meetings Act. You will see that online, but just to let you know that it is scheduled for March 26, which is a Tuesday, 6:30 in the evening. It will be in room 306.
Which is a week from today, actually.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Ward Four, Community Meeting Announcement, April 4, 2019, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., Councilman Murato.
I just want to make an announcement. I would like to start having for Ward Four, maybe quarterly or so, meetings open to the public. I just want to hear concerns from the residents of Riverside. I also invite Councilman Kahoon, who's part of your ward, you know, involves a lot of Riverside. And this meeting is just to hear concerns, share ideas, and share what some of the ideas for, that my ideas for Riverside would be. And sometimes I know it's intimidating for residents to come up here and be on public comment or, and such, so it's just an opportunity to hear them at the Riverside Library, which is going to be on April 4 at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Boards and Commissions' Ordinance Provision Discussion, Revised Ordnances, Chapter Two, Section 2-37, Councilman Murato.
I want to roll tonight. So, I put this on for discussion, and I feel that, I think, moving forward with me, before I introduce an ordinance, I think it would be good to first have a conversation with the council, and I dares as to, you know, share my ideas and get feedback. So, this Boards and Commissions, appointment of Boards and Commissions' Ordinance, I feel that it's an okay ordinance, but I think we can do a little bit better. Madam Clerk, I think we had this discussion before. How many boards, how many openings total are right now currently?
Apparently, I believe there's 152 out of the 25 Boards and Commissions.
So, we have 152 positions open in all these various Boards and Commissions. And I'd like to throw this out to the council. So, in Section D of that ordinance, where no member of one existing, serving on one board can't apply or serve in multiple boards, my idea would be, well, what if we can't fill those vacant boards, those seats and those vacancies? So, my idea would be, why not add to that section where, say, that vacancy was posted for 90 days? And after 90 days, we still can't fill it from a member of the public that would be interested in that board or qualifies, why not open it to a member of, that's serving on another board? And I threw that number 90 out there. I know it's a little extreme, but I'm just really, like, trying to vet out where, if we absolutely can't fill that board, why not offer it to a member serving on another board? And I just would like to open that up for discussion, and I'll talk about Section B after.
If I may. So, yeah, my, thanks for taking this on, because my initial reaction around this is, it's not necessarily easy to find people that are, A, willing to do these boards for nothing, right? And B, have the skills, you know, that are necessary to carry it off, depending on the particular board. So, you know, it's not, it's not outlandish to think that there might be one person who can capably serve on two boards, right? That said, I think we want to balance that with a fair opportunity for as many people who want to serve to be able to serve. I don't know, I mean, how the one came up in the past, probably like anything else in the city, there probably was some kind of political motivation for, you know, restricting individuals to, you know, be on more than one board. I think, Councilman Murato, just my gut says that maybe the right number under paragraph D. might be two. I wonder if, I mean, I wonder if there is, I mean, are we really impacted by somebody doing one board or two boards? I mean, do we really want to prevent somebody from serving on two boards? And then maybe get into exactly that stipulation that you make, right? Now, if you want to do more than that, now let's not gobble up every single board. But it seems to me like, you know, two is, I mean, that's the point at which you say, right, now you're serving on multiple boards. Now you're at the point where you have to think through ethics concerns and conflicts of interest, whether you're representing one board or the other. Two, to me, sounds like a fair number. That's just my input.
So, you're saying, so you were saying that you're open to, after a certain time period, that a member serving on one board can serve on another board, but maximum of two boards?
Yeah, I'm actually thinking, you know, you know, if we, so if I were to amend, right, if I was king for a day, right? The way that I would amend the language, I would say, "No person shall serve on more than two boards or commissions with decision-making authority, and then everything else stays the same. And then every other reference that you have to one switches to two." I think that that's a good balance, because if you get past two, then it's like, all right, you know, take it easy. Somebody else might want to do this. But I had the same problem with, you know, we had these rules about nepotism, and it was like, well, why should somebody be prohibited from serving in a particular role simply because they have a family member who, you know, is also in a decision-making position or serves, you know, in the city? You know, I've also often thought of the, you know, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree, you know, metaphor. Well, guess what? You're, you know, you're throwing out all the other apples because you've captured one of them, you know, from the tree. So, it's the same kind of, I think we try to do these things because they look fair and they have the appearance of being fair, but ultimately, it's, you know, we have to be reasonable, too. So, I, there's nothing scientific behind it. To me, it feels like the right number is two, and like I said, that's just, that's just my opinion.
Actually, I actually like that. I think that's fair. As far as the 90 days, I'd like to open that up to discussion, because I've been hearing that 90 days may be excessive due to the timeframes when, you know, some votes on some of these commissions need to take place and so on. So, I'd like to hear the feedback from the council.
Mr. President? Oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead, go ahead. I'll just quickly, I want to agree with what Councilman Kahoon said, so I won't repeat that verbiage. He outlined it nicely. The 90 days, I have a little problem with, because you're talking three months. That could take you through and beyond the timeframe for that, that particular activity or event. So, if it's a commission that deals, say, with, I don't know, the Carousel, it's mostly a spring/summer thing. If you say 90 days and it carries through that, and then it opens up for January or February, where there's no activity there. So, I don't know about the 90 days. I don't have a big problem with that, but maybe a month. You know, if a commission goes unfilled for a month or two months, tops, then if there's someone else that wants to do it. We all have been involved, I think everyone in this room is, has been active in a lot of activities, and you always see, what, the same people involved, whether it's Girl Scouts, or Blue League, or you name it, it's the same people. That's the nature of humanity. So, if we get an open, there's a vacancy, we can't get anybody for it, and you've got someone who wants to be on the Carousel Commission and can be on another board, or vice versa, that doesn't bother me. You know, as long as they're doing it for the right reasons, and we, and we have given an opportunity to other people to come aboard. So, other than that, I like what you're doing in the language, and I like the number two.
Personally, I had some problems with this last council when it was approved, and to this day, I have problems with it for a number of reasons. First and foremost, I would say that members of the Boards and Commissions shall be appointed based on merit. Or, as I said last term, and I said, I'll repeat myself again this term, people are not flocking to these Boards and Commissions. And a perfect example of that is with the city clerk just read off, with the amount of openings that we have, in excess of 150. So, I'm pretty much open, because you don't see too many people going from one board to the next board or commission. I mean, I doubt very much and highly that you have an abundance of people who are on three to four or multiple set of Boards and Commissions. So, as far as I'm concerned, if it isn't a problem, I don't see that as a problem if you want to keep it open, or if you want to say two, that's perfectly fine with me. However, I don't have a problem with leaving it open personally, myself. The 10-days posting, I don't see why we need 10-days posting. You know, I can understand posting it, but if you want to say five days, cut that in half. So, if you want to appoint someone, someone approaches you of interest today about a board or commission, they could be on the docket for the next meeting and get them going. So, personally, I don't have, I have a problem with the 10-day posting. The application, the city clerk alluded to that, if I'm not mistaken, in the last meeting, or the or the meeting before that. We already have an application now, which we didn't have. We do have an application, and it's, and she simplified it, is pretty much what, the reason why you want to be on that board. I don't think people should state, you know, their, their experiences, because again, people aren't flocking to these Boards and Commissions, and we don't need, we're not hiring or looking at architects for, say, for an example, to be on a beautification board. But, you know, for the housing authority, for the conservation boards, things of that nature, or waterfront, I think they should have some type of experience and background to be on those boards. But when we're talking about these other commissions, I don't see why an individual should have any experience, personally, myself. But I say, as opposed to ten business days, let's go with five business days, simplify the application process. I agree with Councilman Rodrick's with respect to the ninety days. Give it, you know, maybe one month or two months, because again, people aren't flocking for these boards. So let's try to make it, let's try to simplify as much as possible to get more people's interests into these Boards and Commissions.
I agree. So first, I'd like to thank policy writer Mark Fattaro for helping out with this, and also our city solicitor. But, so, you, so, from what I'm hearing, I threw out ninety, Councilman Rodrick's is throwing out thirty, is, I mean, I just threw out the ninety day as an extreme.
No, I understand.
But I have no issue.
Yeah.
I think thirty would be more than reasonable. You know, anyone wants to comment on that?
Plus, when are you going to get a lot of interest, right? It's like when there's actually an appointment being filled, right? I mean, you might see a vacancy sit there forever and ever, and then, oh, we're going to make an appointment, that's when you're going to have somebody step out and say, well, wait a minute, that person's already over there, and I'd like to do that, you know what I mean? So that's, that would give them that opportunity to challenge that.
The other part of this, just a little language cleanup. Currently, we need two forms of proof of residence, to include a photo ID, an additional form such as a utility, utility bill, mortgage statement, or tax bill. I don't think, I don't think they apply it to NASA, but I think one form of ID is sufficient, whether it be a license, passport, just to show records.
Most of these people know one another, and we all know, like, they're essentially from the city. I mean, that's, that's part of our vetting when we appoint someone to a particular board or commission, to know first and foremost that they are a resident of East Providence. And if they're not, then that's our problem. You know, it starts right here, as far as residency is concerned. But that's something I think, you know, when we're, when I'm appointing someone, okay, first thing I ask them is, where do you live? First thing I ask.
Yeah.
So, now, going forward, they want to prove that, that, then they go to the clerk's office and they show the proof at that point in time. But I noticed that you, that's all been striked out as well. So, yes, please.
So I just want to thank you, Councilman Murado, for taking this on, and I want to thank Mark Fattaro for also helping us get this through. Just so you know, the ordinance that's on the books right now is two dash thirty-seven, and one of the reasons why we're having difficulty making appointments to Boards and Commissions or holding up your appointments is because we need to go through the, until this ordinance is changed, this is the process that you need to follow. So in other words, the posting of the ten days, the, the application process, letter of interest, that's all needs to be filed now for any board and commission that we're appointing until this ordinance is changed. So that's why there's a little bit of a rush to get this done, but we've been working on it prediligently for the last sixty days. You'll notice on, under Section A, and I know that the, maybe this consensus that the opening needs to be posted for at least five days, which is fine. One of the things that I think, excuse me, under Section B, one of the most onerous things, and it actually runs afoul of the open records law, is that the public shall have a right to view any application for appointment to Boards and Commissions. That's a little onerous, right? So some people are reluctant to apply if they know that their application is going to be made public, especially if they don't get appointed. So there's been a ruling from various, from the Attorney General's Office and from the Rhode Island Supreme Court, excuse me, Rhode Island Superior Court, that only those successful applications to the appointments are public records. So in other words, if there's ten people applying to a board and you choose one of them, they don't, you don't have a right to see, the public doesn't have a right to see the nine that you didn't choose, they only have to see the application that you did choose. So, if I think by getting rid of that requirement, you not only conform to law, but you might also encourage more people to apply.
And not for nothing, but collecting and then protecting people's personal
Correct.
Information is not something that municipal governments do well.
Yes, exactly. So, you know, the residency requirements is, is in the charter, so that's, we're just repeating that here. And again, the application has been already done by the city clerk. Again, we've been kind of doing it on the slide because it doesn't conform with the current ordinance, but we're trying, trying to move it forward. So her application, or the clerk's application, is the only application that will be accepted, be on the website, hopefully more people can print it out and fill it in. Section C is, is current law about not having ethical conflict for thirty days or the ninety days for vacancy, that, we can change that to whatever number, that's just an arbitrary number. Certainly, I think maybe two or more would be okay, I think that's a great, great compromise there. And then just the, this, this proof of residency is something that's, I guess, unique to East Providence, that you want to make sure that you're appointing someone who's, who actually lives here. That's kind of throws out, that went throughout the charter anyway, but if you want to prove it on a yearly basis, that's up, that's a, just another check. But this certainly simplifies it a lot and hopefully may encourage more people to apply. So we can certainly, I think I got the feel, and I can talk to Councilman Murado tomorrow about the feel, what the, where the city's going on it. But the most important thing I want to make, make clear to you is that until this ordinance is changed, we're following the, the ordinance that's on the books now.
And also to add to that, I think, I, I think I like the, you know, the posting shall include the name of the board, obviously, if you're going to, you need to post that. The appointing authority for the open seat may be, I don't know if we really need that, but I don't see any harm in that. And the powers and duties of the board, I think that's important to know what someone is signing up for, the length of the term, the requirements for service, and desired qualities of a prospective appointee. And since we're talking about Boards and Commissions, I think we already have a ordinance on the books about attendance and how many meetings you miss and stuff, and I think that's something that we should kind of start enforcing, because we don't want people on boards that just have a title and don't contribute or show up to meetings. So I don't know how we, we would enforce that ordinance, but there's already an ordinance in the books.
Councilman, I don't think we enforce that. There's a chair that's appointed to that board or commission, and that should be their responsibility.
The only, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, the only thing I would question you is, the requirements of service and the desired qualities of a prospective appointee, appointee, what does that mean? I mean, so you have different Boards and Commissions, zoning board is different for the Conservation Commission, different for the Beautification. Who, who decides what the desired qualities of a prospective appointee is? And how do I put that on the, on a website? I mean, that's generally up to you as a council to figure out what you think is missing on that board or, and so, I just don't, if, if we're going to have that in the ordinance, then we got to put who is going to decide that, is the city clerk going to decide what the desired qualities are? To me, that's just a broad statement that really is meaningless. As the appointing authority, the, the city council would have the, you know, would know who they're appointing, what the desired qualities that that person brings to that table. But if you want to leave it in, that's, that's your choice, I'm just giving you a choice.
I have no desire, personally, I have no desire.
I think that's a good point. Might be different for all of us.
Again, I disputed that at the time this was, you know, going on for a vote, and I, you know, I'll be more than happy to
To the chair.
Keep me where you have it now with the strike, please.
Mr. Solicitor, do you have accurate editing tonight, or do you need to work this over and come back?
No, this is not on, this is just on for discussion anyway.
So will it be on for vote for next meeting?
It'll be on for first passage, assuming that we can get
So we can get these positions filled?
Correct.
Okay.
That's probably our goal, my goal.
Thank you, Councilman.
Just one, for the, for my processing of things, if we could, if I could just request clarification of when we post something for people in opposed to, right now, we have a ten-day period where we're posting the applicant's information, but we were also talking about if there was some duality in, in the boards. So if they were already involved in one board and they want to do a second board, we were talking about how we were going to post it for thirty, ninety, whatever day. Could we clarify the ten days? Is that implemented into that thirty days or the ninety days when they post that person's application? Does that make sense?
You mean in the new ordinance?
Yeah, if we were going to, if we were going to go ahead and draft the new ordinance, say, the council decided it was going to be thirty days, and you have somebody who's coming in and they're posting, if we could, yeah, is it inclusive or is it in addition to that? I think maybe having that clarification might be good.
Synchronize it all.
Yeah, exactly. I think we should all be
Just to help for my posting purposes as well, and I'm in alignment with what you're thinking.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
That it? Thank you, Councilman. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month follow-up, Councilwoman Souza is absent.
Oh, you might keep that on for
Sure, absolutely. Hold table for the next
Table for the next one.
Okay.
Okay, moving right along.
New business, reports of other city official claims committee report, Solicitor Michael Marcello.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Council President. As you know, the council met at six-thirty in executive session to, to discuss various claims and sewer charge abatements at the executive session. Following action was taken up by unanimous vote unless otherwise noted. The claim of Joan Folenger was referred to Verizon, Verizon for, for further review. The claim of Christian Capizia was referred to National Grid. The claim of Antonio Chavez was denied. The claim of Karen DePietro Seymour was sent to Verizon for further review. The claim of Howard A. Hertlinker Jr. was sent to Verizon. The claim of Lucia F. Lette, an amount of one hundred and fifteen dollars and nineteen cents, was approved. The claim of Ken Kirsch was sent to Verizon. The, the claim of Brian M. Mayaya was sent to Verizon. The claim of Catherine T. Mala was sent to Verizon, and the claim of Philadelphia, excuse me, the subrogation claim of Philadelphia Insurance Company was sent to the Rhode Island Interlocal Trusts. On the sewer abatements, unless otherwise noted, the votes were unanimous. The claim of Algas A. Antavikis was failed on a tie vote. The claim of James Florio was approved in the amount of two hundred and five dollars and fifty-six cents. The claim of Linda Pimentel was denied. The claim of Laura Simino was denied, and the claim of Mr. Sean Turner was approved in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirteen cents. In addition to those claims, there is a notification of a, location of a handicap parking sign pursuant to Section eighteen dash three-one-five of the city ordinances, and the handicap parking zone is requested at one ninety-eight Sutton Avenue.
Mr. Solicitor, the handicap parking spot, that's on for a vote this evening or no?
Apparently, according to the ordinance, as long as it's a claim that's submitted by the Public Works Director and I announce it, it becomes effective on that date, on that.
So it's clear and doesn't need a vote?
I believe it's clear, yeah.
Okay, very good.
If you want, if you want to vote, that's fine.
No, no, just, I was just questioning, inquiring.
Mr. President, I just asked, Steve, were you sitting through that whole thing just for that? Yeah, maybe we can find a way, like, just kind of take a look at our docket and, and the, I think we can probably find better things for Steve to do than sit here and listen to us.
Well, that's, that's one of the first things I said the very first meetings about, you know, employees being here for meetings, you know, but
I missed that, sorry, Steve. All right.
Council President, just hold on, if you just, if you move forward, I just want to check the ordinance to make sure I didn't give you misinformation about how you add before we
Make a motion to approve.
While you're checking that, as long as you mentioned Department Ed Kudo, I appreciate seeing him here also, it's too bad, next time we'll fix that so you don't have to stay. But we didn't have a bad winter, but we had a couple of storms, and I know a lot of us got calls and sent a couple of emails to Mr. Fattaro, got in touch with Mr. Kudo, and then the residents got right back to me immediately and said, thank you. That DPW and Mr. Kudo worked as fast as they could to solve, solve the problems, and that, that ain't easy, as, as they say, I know, watching through the years. So as I sit on this side of the table now, I just want to say thank you, Director Kudo, for, for all you do and getting through these seasons, and don't sit on that laurel, because now, you know, sport season's coming and we're going to do some more things. But while kidding aside, thank you for all you do all the time.
So just for the record, the handicap parking spot does need a vote?
Yes, it does.
However, before we do vote on that, does anyone like to make a motion to accept the Claims Committee report at this point in time?
Move to accept Claims Committee report, it's just read.
Oh, so we do have a motion on the floor by Councilman Cahoon, anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Rodrick. Roll call, vote please, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Right.
Councilman Murado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Moving right along to the next item, for handicap parking spot, requesting a ninety-eight, one ninety-eight Sutton Avenue, oh-two-nine-one-four. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
No.
No, we don't need it?
No, we do need it. We do need it, yes.
I'll, I'll second, but I have a couple of comments about it.
Please state your comment.
So I'll second that and for discussion, I noticed that the property does have a driveway, but is it, I didn't go by there, but is it such that the driveway is not close enough to a door? Is that why we're recommending Mr. Kudo?
Good evening, and thank you, Councilman. At least I can get up and speak, it's why I sat and waited. I do review these requests, and from time to time, I do get them. It has been customary, it's almost, almost a service that the city offers a resident if they're looking to get a handicap space in front of their home. Some of these have become issues sometimes in past history, I've learned, whether people really actually need them or they're just trying to reserve a space in front of their house. And this particular case, like you, like you saw, they do have a driveway, but it is, it's odd configuration in that it's off to the side of the, of the lot and not next to the home itself. And the woman explained, it's, it's easier for her to, you know, the, the house and the doorway is close to the street to get in and out for groceries and, and things of that nature. So, I mean, there's legal parking in front of the home, I really didn't really see an issue with it.
Yeah. I, I wouldn't have a, a big problem. I would hope that in the future, if we become aware that that potty moves, that is there a, is there a procedure that we could remove that sign? Because I, I knew of, of a family once where that happened, and the, the sign stayed, but the new potty in the home was not, handicapped, didn't need it, but they had the parking spot.
Right, we, we do have the authority to, to remove it, I do have the authority to remove it. However, I, I would need to be notified of that fact, right? So oftentimes, you know, there are neighbors that are also keeping eyes on, on these kind of things. So if they see that there's a spot that's being abused, we will get the calls as well. So, I sort of make, while I'm here, because I'm not here that often, I'm much more, I just want to thank you for the compliment regarding, you know, snow removal for the winter, but really, it's not me, I mean, I have a great team I work with, and, you know, it's, it's the guys and, and the, and the gals out there, they're, they're doing the snow party work here for the city, so they're
Well, okay, we'll take that back then.
Yeah. It does, it does
I don't want to take all the credit, I'm saying, there's like, I have forty-five people out there, you know, working and they take pride in what they do, so.
But leadership comes from the top, and we thank you. Now, you don't come often, we can fix that.
Okay.
We, we can, we can ask that you come every meeting and
So I enjoy my Tuesday nights back, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kudo.
Thank you.
All right. So there is a motion
So there is a motion, it was seconded. Councilman Cahoon made the motion, seconded by Councilman Rodrick for an explanation. Did you vote, yes, yay?
Oh, have, no, not yet, I will.
Okay, well, may we continue with the roll call, vote please?
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilman Brito.
Aye. Next item, please.
Resolutions for vote. The first one is resolution requesting that the East Providence City Council name the public skate park at Onomone's John Neighborhood Park at Central Avenue Playground as the Kevin Robinson Memorial Skate Park, co-sponsored by Council Vice President Rodrick and Councilwoman Souza.
Thank you. To the chair, please. Mr. President, I, in my, what will be an ongoing attempt to always honor and, and make, make sure that good townies are remembered, we, we had an East Providence High School graduate, Hall of Fame member, young man who I actually, when I did some Little League coaching back in the day, he and his brother were players I coached, and that is Kevin Robinson, otherwise known as K-Rob, who said known as K-Rob, who said what a lot of townies will say, he gave back to his community. He also became worldwide known for his achievements, and no matter how big he got on international stages, he would come home and come to our schools and our neighborhoods and give private, not private, free demonstrations to the public. And I think we all know of K-Rob. And people like K-Rob, and a person who worked closely with him was another benefactor of with townie pride, and that is John Connavalli. And there are just two examples. Were not for those two young graduates of our high school, we wouldn't have some of the refurbished schools we have, we wouldn't have some of the refurbished parks and playgrounds, and I'm talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars donated in cash, labor, work. So without further ado, and in conjunction with the City Winter Fest Committee, who at one of their meetings with the Robinson family present, thought it would be a good idea to name the skate park, which Kevin Robinson paid for out of his pocket totally at the Honamonees Park. Now, we're not recommending that we change the name of the park, it's still Honamonees Park at Central Avenue, but the one skate park apparatus, the big piece of wood, or several pieces, that Kevin Robinson paid for and had installed, and is the only one of its type in the area, we're proposing that that be named for the late Kevin Robinson. I did get in touch with his family, they are graciously in support of this, and I suggested that they didn't have to come out tonight, because it is our thought, and I've talked to all of you, that we'll do a public ceremony when the weather breaks, sometime when it gets warmer, maybe in May, and we'll invite the public on a Saturday morning to the park, and we'll have some skaters and the Robinson family present, and hopefully, the council president and the mayor can be there to make the presentation. The Winter Fest Committee will pay for a nice plaque. And therefore, it is my motion that this resolution be passed, whereas, and I'll say K-Rob, but it's formally here as Kevin Robinson, and K-Rob, a graduate of East Providence High School, distinguished member of the High School Hall of Fame, and whereas K-Rob was known to thousands of freestyle BMX riders worldwide, and whereas K-Rob progressed and pioneered the sport during his 25-year career, and whereas K-Rob gained worldwide notoriety as the first person to land a double flare at X Games 2006, I myself tried a single flare, didn't make it. I won an only attempt. Whereas.
Is there laughter?
Whereas K-Rob is the holder of 10 X Games medals, four gold, and two Guinness World Records, and whereas K-Rob visited schools and events throughout East Providence, Rhode Island, and other locations in this nation to provide free demonstrations, and whereas K-Rob, through his nonprofit, K-Rob Foundation, realized his dream of building East Providence's first free outdoor public skate park in 2016. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of East Providence, in coordination with the City of East Providence Winter Fest Committee, hereby names the public skate park at Honamonees John Park as the Kevin Robinson Memorial Skate Park. I would propose that as a motion.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor as a proposal for this resolution. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I think everyone would. Go ahead, Mr. Morado.
I second that. Seconded by Councilman Morado. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Mr. President, could the record reflect, could the clerk put all of us as sponsors of that, please? So we will remit that to the family as the entire council sponsoring it. And I thank Councilwoman Souza, the park resides within her board, so I thought it was protocol, and she would come aboard, but I think we would all like to be sponsors of this.
Thank you, Councilman.
It will be recorded it that way.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to pay invoices for pre-construction expenses for the new East Providence High School, Councilman Cahoon.
Now, this isn't anywhere near as fun or interesting, but in the need to pay our bills for the pre-construction work that's going on for the high school, specifically the architectural bills and the owner's project manager's bills for the month of February 2019, the amounts for those bills are, for the architect, $599,049.01, for the owner's project manager, $59,000 even. So moving to approve that resolution, which authorizes the mayor to go ahead and make payment of those invoices.
And that was done in the form of a motion, so we do have a motion on the floor from Councilman Cahoon to pay the invoices.
I second.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilman Morado. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
With that being said, it looks like there is no need for us to reconvene into executive session, because we did complete all our claims report during that time. So appears to me that the next item on the docket, unless anyone has something.
Mr. President.
Okay. Second? I thought I'd never heard that this evening. Thank you, Councilman.
I can't write that back.
Then we have a second.
Okay. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to pay invoices for pre-construction expenses for the new East Providence High School, Councilman Cahoon.
Now, this isn't anywhere near as fun or interesting, but in the need to pay our bills for the pre-construction work that's going on for the high school, specifically the architectural bills and the owner's project manager's bills for the month of February 2019, the amounts for those bills are, for the architect, $599,049.01, for the owner's project manager, $59,000 even. So moving to approve that resolution, which authorizes the mayor to go ahead and make